And welcome to the Cedar Falls Committee, the whole meeting this February 19th, 2018. And I like to call this meeting to order. We have five items on the agenda this evening. The Library Board of Trustees interview, non-street parking regulations for trailers, butchering and harvesting animals within the city limits, recreation aquatics program, and bills and payroll. We'll start it off, and I will at least introduce the Board of, Library Board of Trustee interviewee, Evan Renfro. If you can come forward, please, and give us a little background, and we'll then open it up for council questions.
Thank you. I appreciate the appointment. It's a community of help and counsel. Mayor said, my name's Evan Renfro. Professor at UNHIS, my fourth year there. Professor with a science background in military intelligence. Longtime user and lover of libraries. I think that they serve an essential purpose, beauty, and a solid civic entity, a space for neutral thought, critical thinking, and I would very much like to be a part of that.
Good. Thank you for that. I'll now open it up to council if there's any questions for Mr. Renfro. Mr. Blanford.
What do you think the biggest challenge is for the library?
So I think having citizen engagement is a big challenge. You know, there's so many things people like to do on their phones and at home. I think getting the narrative out there, what the library can provide, access of information, and we have great librarians. Hey, help me with this research project. There's a lot of information out there, not all of it is equally good. The ability to distinguish good information from bad information, I think, is only going to become more essential.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anybody else on council for Mr. Renfro? I'd ask just briefly if you have experience or what you believe the experience might be as a board member or the library board as a whole in interaction with the city and the different sort of partnership that we all kind of brag about in terms of decisions to be made and the autonomy the library board has.
Absolutely. Thank you. I think resource allocation is an important one. I have a background in managing large sums of money through the military. It's not always the question of having enough funds or not. Often the question is, how do you allocate those funds? I think the primary vehicle to figure out how to do that the best way possible is communication with city council, in case of this context. I think where you have problems is when communication breaks down. And so I'm all about open lines of communication, feedback loops, getting everybody's input before making, hopefully, the right decision.
Thank you. One last time for council, Mr. Blanford.
So curious, Mr. Renfro, so the library board, while independent, is an extension of the city. How do you see that relationship and how that should function?
Again, the smoother it functions, the better. And I think the, how, the question becomes, how can you make that relationship as smooth as it can be? And I like to just go back to that open lines of communication. I think it's easy, at least in my role in the government and even in academia, it's often all too easy to get in a corner and start doing your own thing. And where that runs into problems is you start surprising somebody where, have you given the heads up? Have you had a chance to talk to that person? Maybe there wouldn't have been a problem to begin with. You can nip these things in the bud, I think, early on in a communicative process.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your willingness to potentially serve on the Board of Library.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the second item, non-street parking regulations for trailers. City Attorney Kevin Rogers will be presenting for council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. You'll recall that on December 18th last year, a matter was referred to staff to review possible ordinance changes related to a couple of matters. And I'm going to present for you potentially three separate ordinances for your consideration to bring back to council at a later date for potential adoption. The first one has to do with parking of large vehicles and trailers on city streets and in municipal lots. What's up on the screen is a current ordinance, the parking ordinance, and that's found at section 26-269. And it provides that, except as otherwise provided, trucks of a gross capacity of one ton or more shall not park upon the streets or municipal parking lots of the city. There are a couple potential problems with this ordinance as now stated. The first is, it's not clear what a gross capacity of one ton means exactly. And secondly, if this ordinance were to be enforced literally, then many everyday activities would be prohibited, such as deliveries and the like. And so that ordinance probably needs a looked at and reviewed for possible changes. And so the one that we put together for proposed parking ordinance, I'm not going to recite all these various types of vehicles, but basically, we have brought from chapter 321 of the Code of Iowa, all the various different types of vehicles that are listed there. The advantage there is they come with a ready-made definition in the Iowa code. And so, for the most part, those are taken from the Iowa code, those different types of vehicles. And it states that those vehicles, I'm not going to list them out, shall not be parked on any public street or right-of-way or in any public parking lot at any time. And so, remember when I talked about the previous ordinance or the current ordinance? Actually, it is stated as many legitimate everyday activities would be prohibited. And so, what this proposal would include are the exceptions for activities where someone parking there would have a legitimate purpose. And so, it doesn't apply to persons actively loading or unloading, or to persons actively engaged in providing services or conducting operations for, upon adjacent or nearby premises, provided that that vehicle would be parked otherwise legally. So it wouldn't be in a prohibited zone, even though loading or unloading, for example. And so, we believe that this addresses some impreciseness in the current ordinance and also provides for exceptions for folks engaged in legitimate activities. And so, for that one, I know there are a lot of different types of vehicles listed, but we certainly want to be complete in the listing. And you'll notice that there are trailers specifically listed there, and then elsewhere there's a general category for other trailers that could haul all these various types of equipment that would be prohibited. And so, that would be the recommendation on the parking of large vehicles and trailers on city streets and in lots. So I'll stop here. If any questions you might have, be glad to address those.
Has there been some large problem with this? It seems like it's quite a solution for something that I didn't realize was a problem.
We've come to know occasionally that folks have complained about that, and it was difficult for code enforcement, law enforcement, to actually apply the ordinance that's on the books. And so, it did need clarification. We have had some complaints.
So are those complaints not dealt with with the 48-hour rule?
Not necessarily. And the other part of that is, large trucks maybe shouldn't be on a residential street, for example, even for 48 hours.
Well, this doesn't just mean large trucks. I mean, you've got utility vehicles, a boat, a camper, recreational vehicle, all types of things. So it seems excessively restrictive to the homeowners.
Well, there are certain categories that could be taken from this, but I would say that the list here is inclusive. If council decided that it was over-inclusive, it could always address that and not include all of the categories listed. But the goal here was to make sure we covered every potential possibility, and if council views it as over-inclusive, we can address that, certainly.
Mr. Whelan, did you have something?
Thank you. I brought this forward, and the reason I did it, over the last 12, 13 years, I've had complaints throughout that time period, especially on trailers that are parked on the street that are related to business. People will use it for their business, and rather than park it in a commercial area, they'll put it out in front, and they're legally allowed to do that for 48 hours. Well, these vehicles are moved every 24 hours because they're used in business, and so they continue to park. The problem becomes on the weekend, they're parked there for almost three days and not receiving tickets. Well, why not receiving tickets? The process for issuing tickets is to mark the vehicle, come back, and find out it hasn't been moved. The owners of these vehicles, in my understanding, see the mark, and they'll take the trailer, move it around the block, and repark it in the same spot. And they're still legal to park that way because they've moved it within the required time period. So it's been going on for about 12 years. It's not a big issue. I've dealt with it with the police department, but it's just an ongoing issue where some people are taking advantage of the law, even though our neighbors would prefer not to have the trailers parked there. And so, I finally brought it forward, and I think you've done an outstanding job in looking at what other communities have done in order to eliminate this type of problem. I've never intended to park commercial vehicles in a residential area, I don't think. Anyway, that's what people in a residential area will tell me. I think it's unfortunate that we have to come up with a law that defines all these areas. But maybe this will get rid of the problem, and we won't have another 12 years of complaints from the same areas of the city. So representing the whole city, I see it from all over the community, it's not just one area.
Anyone further from council? Mr. Miller?
I tend to side with Susan, or agree with Susan on this. I know of at least one person that keeps his camper motorhome, drivable motorhome, parked outside, stored outside of city limits, lives in an area that he can pull it into or near his property to load it, and sometimes would leave it overnight, which technically would be illegal, I guess, the way I understand this. And as well, just for myself and business, we pull a trailer for work, and in a lot of cases, there isn't an option to move that every night because you don't have any other alternative. If you can leave it sit there for two nights, three nights, or even during the week, it gives us a spot to store tools to work on somebody's house when there's no other alternative. So I guess, for me and my personal stuff, I guess, it seems a little overbearing. I struggle with the camper, the travel trailer. If anybody has a friend come in from out of town and they're staying overnight, and they've got a camper, and they're just passing through, are they legal in our city? It seems a little much.
Mr. Cruz, did you have?
Yeah, I was going to comment similar to Mark's comment there. Talked to several contractor friends of mine, and they voiced the same concerns, that when you're working on a project, you bring in your dump trailers and what have you. And in one particular case, they got, they were on the Monday, Wednesday, Friday side, and it was Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and the code enforcement came by to give him a ticket, and he just bought a permit, which I thought was interesting, but he was on the wrong side. So apparently, you can do that. But I think this is a little too broad. I can understand commercial trailers, semis, and that sort of thing, but snowmobile trailers, jet ski trailers, those sorts of recreational vehicles, people bring them out to get them ready to use for the summer, put them away in the fall. A de-tasseling bus, I know someone that brings their de-tasseling bus, and it'll park on the road, and they use it. They go with the crew. On the weekend, it sits there. You know, it's all legitimate. It's not taking advantage of moving it around the block and reparking. So there must be a different way to address that perpetual problem that's always there year-round, potentially. This is a little too broad.
So in those cases you mentioned, the ordinance would apply, and those vehicles would need to be in the driveway. So you're right in that the scope would scoop up those uses you're talking about. Also, though, on the specific example of the person engaged in construction activities that are actually working at a site there, and so if you leave your construction trailer there while you're working at the project, that wouldn't be in violation of this particular proposed ordinance.
Would that include even overnight, Kevin?
Yes, it would.
So if you're starting on a job site and you leave it throughout that week, as long as the job site is ongoing, it would be exempt?
You're still working at that job site? Right.
So if I'm a painter, and I've got a paint trailer, and I'm painting your house, I could leave it there for three, four weeks if you had a big house?
As long as the project lasts.
As long as I'm working the site. So that takes care of some of the issues that I've seen brought up. This is very well-written to cover all contingencies. The option is, I continually call the police department, tell them to bring a police car out, tag it, and keep doing it. And people are smart enough to get around that. And that's the dilemma. You have people taking advantage of the law, and the only option is to use an excessive amount of police vigilance in order to tag them. And so, they get away with it for 10 or 12 years. The option is simply to park your commercial trailer when you're not using it, where most people do who have a business. Mark, I think you park, you don't park on the street with your vehicles unless you're doing a job, and then you stay there as long as you need to stay. So that's the issue and why I brought it forward. I just don't want to be taking police time when we can solve the problem with an ordinance. And it's unfortunate we have to do that. But there are just a certain limited number of people that are going to take full advantage of the law as long as we don't change it.
That's right.
Yeah, please.
What other options were there to actually address what, if they're trying to do whatever this small, I've never had this complaint, but if there's a small amount of people that they're trying to restrict this parking on, what are other options other than this very restrictive one?
You can identify the types of vehicles that you want to restrict from parking in certain ways, such as by gross weight, meets and bounds, length, width. There are different ways to approach the description of the vehicle that you're trying to control. So it could be by gross weight, for instance. There's other ways to do that. The question is, where do you draw the line, then, on the vehicles that you're trying to prevent from parking on the street?
It doesn't sound like the complaint was from a large vehicle, but perhaps it was a vehicle that just stayed too long. So was there any other tweaking to the 48-hour rule that we could do?
The, we weren't charged with looking at the 48-hour ordinance, but the problem with getting into the 48-hour ordinance is if you impose some sort of distance requirement to avoid the tagging the tire and somebody moving is, how long would the person have to stay at the new location parked for there not to be a violation? Hold car, the next block, return it back, it's not in violation. So this, the charge here was to talk about only large vehicles because obviously, this proposed ordinance would not relate to cars and pickups.
Mr. Cruz?
So you have a situation where you see the same trailer that might be the same size as a car, and it would be under one of these categories? That would be a prohibited vehicle?
Yes. If it's a, if it's a trailer capable of hauling all of the enumerated vehicles listed there, then it would.
So would a jet ski trailer be a commercial trailer?
It's not a commercial trailer, no.
So that wouldn't fall under this?
Doesn't appear to, unless it could haul one of these enumerated items. And so, a boat trailer would be in violation of the ordinance. A trailer that could haul an ATV would be in violation of the ordinance.
That's where I have a little concern. You're getting kind of broad. You know, you get a boat, you could have a little flat-bottom fishing boat.
That would fall within.
It would be smaller than a car.
Right.
Essentially. But you can't park it on the street under this.
Right. It would have to be in the driveway. And keep in mind as well, for, I heard the example of the motorhomes parking overnight. You know, we would respond to a complaint about that. I don't know if you'd get a complaint about a motorhome that loaded up for the early morning trip the next morning, whether that'd be a problem. But if there were technical compliance with the words, it could not park on the street unless they were loading or unloading, or there was something going on at that premises where they were parked.
So what sort of citation would they be getting? Would they get a warning, presumably, a time or two, to alert them to this new code?
Now you're into enforcement. And I'm not sure I'd be qualified to answer that one.
Jeff, want to jump on that one?
It would be difficult if we provided somebody a warning. We would have to have some kind of database where we track that, so we would know whether somebody received a warning or not. So there could be some, I'd have to put some thought behind that as to how we would want to track that and how that would work. It's possible we could do something of that nature. A lot of people would not know that that is an ordinance, and would think I could park in front of my house for a short period of time and not know that. So I could see that being a problem.
Would it be feasible to put a 48-hour clause in this?
Well, the 48-hour clause would still apply.
It still applies. So you're saying zero time here?
That's exactly right.
Mr. Green?
Which other council members have fielded similar complaints?
You can open that up. If you're to vote or take a look.
I've had a couple. Is there any other means of addressing this? It seems like it's a pretty isolated incident, or at least over 12 years, I get, but it sounds like the same person or individual. I mean, is there a way that neighbors could use a petition or something to move this along versus throwing anybody in a motorhome that comes to our community against violating the law?
You're going to have more violations than you're going to cure problems.
It's kind of the way I'm looking at it, too. I mean, potentially, it's.
It's not a big problem. It's been going on for a long time. But it is a problem if you live in those areas and you keep calling your council.
Is there a safety?
These people are fully taking advantage of the 48-hour. Neighbors have said, we prefer you don't park there. They still do it. I've got a legal right to do it. And so, all I'm trying to do is say, it's come to a point to where they're going to outsmart our 24-hour every time, or we don't have the police power or manpower to go out there every time they get a call. So the option is to tell the neighbors, call them every time you see that trailer. They would call every day because the trailer's out there every night. They'd say, come out and mark it, see if it's there for 24. And I would tell them to do it on a Friday night.
Is there a safety issue?
In these areas, it'll sit there for three days. Now, in the wintertime, it's sat there for two weeks without being moved. How do I know? The snow's still around, the tires on two of those vehicles. So they're not working them in the wintertime, and yet they're leaving them parked there in violation of the 48-hour.
Wouldn't that get towed after a certain time period?
The police have to come out and market. They have to, they have to have identified it as being a violation. So it's a two-step process, takes a trip out and trip back. That's two round trips in order to get a ticket.
I think, Mr. Miller, I had a quick question, and that, is there a safety issue for folks who are complaining? Mr. Whelan, is it, is it safety, aesthetics, or?
No, it's just aesthetics, and it's the character of the neighbor that people are complaining about. There is one issue, in the wintertime, when it snows, you get a pile of snow going around the trailers, which indicates they've been sitting there longer than they should, so.
I assume it could be a safety issue if you've got a semi-tractor trailer lined up there. A vision could be a problem there. And again, if we go back to where we started with the current ordinance, 26-269, if we don't want to have this wide a net that's proposed here, we can narrow it in. But as the ordinance is now, it's unenforceable. And so, any and all tractors and combines and semi-tractors and trailers can park anywhere on the streets or municipal lots. So at the minimum, we maybe should consider addressing the one we have. But it is entirely council's discretion how broad that net is, if it's a problem at all to council.
Mr. Blanford?
Well, I think what I've been trying to get at, I think this is too restrictive for the problem that they have, and I think this would create more problems than what we currently have. And so, I don't support this. We want to relook at the ordinance we have regarding, like you mentioned, that'd be fine, but I just think this is way too restrictive.
I would agree with that.
Well, I suppose to organize as possible. If there is a motion towards staff recommendation, I'll accept.
I make a motion, we move forward with staff recommendation to council.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
I believe, you have your count there, ladies?
Petition house.
Who would you show a hands for a yes, please? Three yeses and four no's. I saw Mr..
Frank, Dave.
Go higher. Thank you, Frank.
That does, that does fail.
Thank you, Kevin.
Sure. I've combined them, so I'm just going to stay here for the, for the next item on animal This did start with complaints that came in, and very difficult under the current ordinance, which doesn't address this topic, to put a stop to it. And so, interestingly enough, when I researched Iowa ordinances, we didn't find any that specifically addressed this issue. There are some around the country that I looked at, but in Iowa, it's not been addressed so far as I could tell in city ordinances. And so, a consideration was made on a nuisance-type enforcement mechanism that was found to be lacking, and so a direct prohibition seemed to be the direct route, so there'd be no misunderstanding. And so, let me move back to the proposed ordinance. And so, it provides that no person shall, within the city limits, slaughter, butcher, or process any animal or fowl on public property, or, within the sensory perception, be any person not on the same premises on private property. And then it talks about disposal in a sanitary, lawful manner. And so, this, to speak plainly, would relate to folks getting a deer, deciding to dress it in their front yard, or other animals. And this would prohibit that. It would, it would tell folks that, of course, you could do this activity, but it would be out of sight of folks that wouldn't be on the same premises. And so, passersby, for instance. And so, the proposed ordinance was drafted with those things in mind. The words sensory perception were used because it wouldn't only be sight, it would be smell and hearing and other senses, basically to protect passersby and those types of activities. And so, on this one, we're starting from whole cloth, then, and this would be brand-new. It would not be amending a current ordinance. This would be a new ordinance that we put in the code of ordinances. So with that, I'll have entertained questions on that as well.
Questions or comments? Mr. Roger? Mr. Cruz?
So the way you describe this there, somebody would be on the sidewalk, looking at a property and seeing a deer being dressed, would be a violation. But if they're behind their property, they don't have a garage to shelter the activity, they would be okay?
If they're on the same premises, on the yard, by the garage, for that particular person who's on the premises. But if there's somebody on premises, somebody off premises, the ordinance would be designed to protect the people off.
Off premises.
Off premises.
So then.
So the reason for that would be, read literally, unless we set on the same premises, you could get into, walking into the meat department at Fairway. So that's what that provision's designed to. Of course, we don't want to prohibit that.
So somebody without a garage?
Yes.
And they hunt, bring home their deer, they can dress it in the backyard, hang it from a tree, as long as it's not visible from the sidewalk?
Right. Or someone outside the premises.
Like a backyard, then, too?
Sure.
Would be a problem.
It shouldn't. It shouldn't be unless somebody can walk by and see it. Now, if they walk up to the house or look around the corner of the house, that's a different matter. That's not what it's designed to prevent.
Let's say it's an adjoining backyard. They're in their backyard. If they see you in your backyard on the other side of the road, or this side, that would be a violation, right?
It would. It would have to be inside then, out of sight.
Mr. Whelan?
Question, I'm wondering, is this a problem? How many complaints have we had on people harvesting animals? Is it something that happens daily? Have we had more than one complaint?
Mr. Mayor, I can recall, I believe, four complaints this winter, two from the same address.
From the same address, so it's one person we're going to change an ordinance for?
Four total complaints this winter. Two of those four complaints came from the same address.
Really, it's trying to get rid of one person's problem. Is it really a problem for the people, Cedar Falls, if we want to change an ordinance?
I think we live in a community...
I just don't understand it.
We live in a community, and butchering a deer in your front yard is just unacceptable, I think, to the majority of people in the community, so...
Wouldn't it be easy just to go to that neighbor and say, "Would you please move it?"
In ideal world, that would happen, but that doesn't happen, unfortunately, so...
What if he says no?
So we're going to add an ordinance for one property?
Well, I...
Sounds like it to me.
It sounds like there's at least two this year, so...
Mr. Moore?
Two.
A quick question. I'm not a hunter, so I don't know much about, but I thought deer were usually gutted at the kill site, and then when you hang them, is that what it means by when you say "process" would be this, where you let them hang for a while?
Yes. It was intended to include the entire process when they have it back at home. I'm not a hunter either. I don't know what happens out in the field when they get the deer, so I can't answer that, but there's...
But by saying the word "process," you're saying they can't leave it hanging where people can see it?
Right.
Okay.
Right. I think they have to bleed out, and so that's part of the processing, so...
Mr. Cruz? Could we put some language in here to say prohibiting in the front yard, and then put it into the backyard would be acceptable? Because if we have such a minor occurrence of it, it would be obvious you wouldn't want it in the front yard, to most, many people. Hunters wouldn't care. But if you said, "Not visible from the front sidewalk"?
That helps with a particular geographic configuration, but there'd be so many, I think, opportunities to view that activity in a backyard or side yard. I think you'd want to be inclusive, and then you're going to get into, what's the backyard? What's the front yard? What's the side yard?
It's in the code, I believe.
So I think...
Go ahead. I'm not sure that that approach would address the issue that's been raised.
But with this ordinance, they could still do it in their garage?
Sure they could.
Okay.
And I guess the other way that I was seeing that is, if somebody doesn't have a garage, they can hang a tarp up or do whatever you need to do. But for a mom driving down the road with her four-year-old daughter, seeing Rudolph, I'd have to believe the majority of people do not want to look at this.
That's the front yard again.
Front yard, backyard, doesn't matter.
I think...
There's alternatives that you can do, so your neighbors don't have to watch you butcher your deer.
Can I ask, Jeff, what happened? You said you've gotten several complaints. What do you do? And how do you react? How do you respond to it?
Well, depending on the complaint, but we have, this year, on some of those complaints, has asked, told them we have received a complaint, and asked them if they would move. And we did have a couple of occasions where they would not move the animal, but some do.
I've talked to a couple hunters that I know about this as well, and the majority of them have the utmost respect for that animal and would not do this. They, in their garage, off city limit, out of city limits or whatever, but most people, I think, or most hunters, anyway, have the utmost respect for that animal in which they would not do this, so...
And this would give Jeff's people something to respond with?
Exactly.
Any further comments from council? If someone in the public would have come up in this, please feel free.
Mike Johnson, 224 King Biden Street. I am one of the folks that have complained about deer. And I want to share a picture of what I get to see from my house.
Yeah, we can all pass it down if you want to.
We've come home on several occasions and have had two or three deer hanging up from a lean-to that's on the north side of a property, which is out of view of that particular resident that is at that house. And so it's out of sight for him, but it's my front door as I walk up to my house. We've asked on several occasions if he could hide it, cover it up. We don't have children, but I would be concerned, just like Marcus said, anybody that would come into the neighborhood, see two large deer hanging from their necks or their antlers, would not be a sight that you'd want somebody to see. The other thing is, I have another picture that shows the back of his pickup parked in the cul-de-sac with all of the deer carcasses in it, and that truck was parked there for over a week with that material in it. And most of this took place in December, when it was 40, 50 degrees. I, too, am not a hunter, but I have spoken to lots of hunters. That is not the proper way that you're to address preparing that meat for butchering. It's too hot of a temperature, and so there's other concerns that I would have, just from a health perspective. But being a resident of North Cedar, it's a little bit more open, it's closer to the river. I'd also be concerned about bringing other, or attracting other animals into the neighborhood that would smell that meat. So that's one of the concerns that we're bringing forward, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Mr. Mayor?
On your vehicle parked in the cul-de-sac, I'd encourage you to call the police department, have it marked, if it happens again.
Good. Thank you.
Yep, we've done that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Green here, and I'll go over to you, sir.
Well, just for the two parts of that, looking at this, it seems like a fairly common-sense ordinance. It's surprising something like this isn't in place already, particularly for the sanitation and the health aspect of it, as Mr. Charton had said. And I'd be really curious to see if there is a lobby group of people who want to be able to dress deer in their yards, if it comes before our final vote. I just don't see that that would exist.
Mr. Moore, did you have anything?
My only question was whether we needed to define the sanitary manner a little further.
That was considered, and on the sanitary manner, we thought in a manner that's not a public nuisance is what that meant. We didn't want to get too narrow on that and tell them exactly how they need to dispose of it, but there are certain ways that the state law allows them to dispose of it, and that's the other reference, accordance with the law. That was the intention.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything further from council? I would once again entertain a motion to go towards...
Motion to approve.
Second. City recommendations. A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. Thank you for time and effort.
One more.
Thanks for your time and effort in the first two, and then the fourth and the third.
As this last matter was considered, and to the point that was just raised, talking about disposal, once you're finished with this process, what's the best way to do it? And I put up for council consideration the current ordinance, and you can see that it talks about unburied for more than six hours, and there's some language, basically, if you're in charge of the animal, you've got to take care of it, getting it disposed of. And it also says that the carcasses should be buried outside the city limits in a depth of at least four feet. And the problem, there are some issues here with exactly enforcing, you know, if you had control or proving ownership, especially the deer that's caught out in the wild, were you in charge of it at the time of its death? Also directing folks to bury it outside the city limits would be outside the city's jurisdiction. So we didn't feel that was appropriate as well. So we attempted to address this issue and talk about, and the other thing, let me back up, I'm sorry. The other thing is, the current ordinance did not address folks just throwing it onto public property, and so we thought that could use some improvement as well. And so what we came up with is this proposal, and it's talking about placing or allowing to be placed dead animals or fowls, and then we're talking about the public area, so that takes care of that issue. Also, you shall not allow any dead animal or fowl which you owned or had control over at the time of death to remain in the public right-of-way or public place for more than 24 hours. I'll get back to 24 hours in a minute. And you shall not allow any dead animal or fowl to remain on your premises for more than 24 hours after death. And again, the proper disposal is directive if such occurrences happen. The 24 hours is a change, as you can note from the current ordinance, that provides for six hours, and the reason for that is state code says 24 hours. So we made it consistent with state code. Otherwise, the attempt here is to cover all possibilities of dead animals or fowl on one's premises or in public areas. So this is a change. There is existing code, but we feel that this does a little better job of specifically defining persons' duties when it comes to dead animals or fowl, whether you're responsible for the death of the animal or not. So with that one, I'd entertain questions as well.
Mr. Miller?
Is there any way you can tie public sight of said animals into this? Or do we have to abide by word-for-word what the state says?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, to Mr. Johnson's point, the neighbor's got five or six dead animals in the back of his truck, sitting on a public street. I've got to think most people don't want to look at that either.
Right, so this would require, I mean, there's a 24-hour rule there, so if they're in the back of the truck, arguably, they're not still processing it. And so this wording would say that that has to be disposed of within 24 hours.
Sit there for 24 hours. Is there any way that that can be tied into this, or are we restricted by state?
We're not. We can go shorter timeframe than the state code allows. The problem with going too short is the effective ability for folks to remove these animals by calling the city and arranging for pickup, and we didn't want to have someone that's in good faith trying to deal with it, not, didn't have enough time to get it done.
Sure.
So we thought, well, we'll go the breadth of the state statute, and we can, council's discretion, pull that back if it wishes to.
I don't have any problem with the 24 hours. It's more so keeping it out of public sight. If there's a way that that can be tied to this?
I would say that maybe a better way to approach that issue would be go back to the previous one and say something about the remains, not putting the remains in the public way at all. So I could go back to that previous ordinance proposal and do that.
If that's possible, that...
Well, to carry this a little bit further, we've been talking about deer harvesting. What about, you know, Mr. Squirrel in your backyard? Am I responsible for Mr. Squirrel, or is that subject to...
Roadkill.
Roadkill would be the same thing. Sometimes roadkill's around for two or three days.
Yes, so if it's on the street, roadkill on the road, that would be the city's responsibility or county. But Mr. Squirrel in the backyard, you'd be responsible for somehow getting that animal away, whether that's called a city or otherwise. Doesn't require you to necessarily bury it, but it does require folks not to allow dead animals while they're not laying about in their yard.
Anything further from council? What city services are you referring to to haul away a dead animal?
Well, the one I used when I had a personal experience, I got ahold, the city, and the city has actually a contract with Humane Society to pick up carcasses. And there's rendering services as well. There are a lot of ways to deal with this issue.
I begin, entertain a motion if folks want to move forward with this recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next item, this Recreation Aquatics Program. I think we have Brock Goose and Chris Showntag coming for some information. Welcome.
Hello, all. Thank you for requesting slash allowing us the opportunity to come in and tell you a little bit about what's going on in the Recreation Department, our facilities and programs, and tell you how many people we are reaching and stuff, there are citizens in Cedar Falls, and the programs we're offering them. I'm Brock Goose, I'm the Sports Recreation Supervisor. This is Chris Showntag, who is our aquatics slash facility supervisor and starter-upper of the presentation. I'll let you go.
Been a while since I've run one of these, so bear with me for just a second. Thank you again for letting us come in. Talk a little bit about what's been going on with the Recreation Center and the aquatics, excuse me, and the Aquatics Center over the past year. And we've had some improvements in both locations, but we'd kind of like to first start out with Recreation Center. We, it's not a new upgrade, but we have recently gotten some software called Max Galaxy that we use. The kind of nice thing about the software is it's not only used by us, but we also share it with visitors and tourism and the Hurst Center. So we all, all three areas use it. We can do our membership sales through either the Rec Center or the Hurst Centers, our facility check-in, so when you come to workout at the Rec Center, scan your card, we can check in there, we can check in at the pools, and other locations as they become available. And then we also use it as a point of sale for all four locations, Recreation Center, Hurst Center, visitors and tourism, and the swimming pools. It's, once we got the gist of it, I think it's worked out pretty well. A little struggling is everything when it came out right away, but I think it's doing very well. If you utilize Recreation Center, one of the things you might have noticed in August was we went through an upgrade in some of our fitness equipment. The fitness room itself, we got new flooring, new paint, new electrical television cable and network cables all in that room to help bring in all of this new cardio equipment that we purchased. In that room alone, we got eight treadmills, three arc trainers, two octane trainers, seven ascent trainers, two rowers, and a recumbent bike. If you want to know what it is, you've got to come down and visit, because I don't use the stuff, obviously, but it's really nice, and it has a lot of functions that were not available on the older equipment. It'll let you watch all sorts of television while you're doing it and keep up to date on Facebook. We're starting to learn a little bit more and more about what the software that came with it will do, so we can also start offering more challenges to our patrons. Things got kind of shifted around. Some of the best equipment that we had in the fitness room was then moved up to the track area, we call that a track cardio loft. That also got new electric to handle the new equipment or newer equipment, new television cable and cable networks. We did move quite a bit of our old equipment up there, and then what was left over was sold to some schools, and basically schools around the area. The last place in the Rec Center that was upgraded a little bit was our fitness loft. If you've been there, it's the area that is in between the lower level and the track. In the good old days, it used to house a pool table, but now it's cardio equipment. Up there, the floor was cleaned. We removed some shelving to make it a little more modern-looking. We added new electrical again and cable for televisions, along with network connections for future expansions. Some of the things that we have don't quite need the network cables that are up there, but we have them ready for the next phase, whenever that comes around. Up there, we got three new climb mills, two, three espresso bikes, four recumbent bikes, two upright bikes, and one stepper. So if you get this opportunity to come up and check this stuff out, we'll be happy to show you around. Talk a little bit about our memberships, registrations, and rentals that we take care of through the Recreation Center. We're not all about fitness. Our membership sales, we had 1,981 sales. Actually, when putting this together, I was pleasantly surprised that it went up by 30 memberships over the previous year. So that was encouraging when I was putting this together. Patron usage, that is down just a smidgen, whether that's in tune to our little bit of like a three or four-week shutdown of a couple rooms to get them ready for the improvements, or just a plain people not being as active. But that's down just a little, but we still served about 229, round up to 230,000 people throughout the year. Our facility, we also ran out, we ran out that in the beach house. Our fit gym, our smaller gym, we ran it out 11 times throughout the year. Our meeting room over... Our meeting room, over 14. Our multipurpose room, we rented out over 50 times through the years. 22 of those rentals, we count as birthday parties that Christine Anderson sets up and runs through there, so those are still pretty popular throughout the year. Our whole facility is rented out seven times. One of them was a post-prom, and six of them were to a church night. The beach house was rented this summer for over 29 times while it was open, and that's on top of anything that was rented out or used by either Sturgis Falls or the North Shore Boat Club. So that continues to see a lot of, a lot of use out there. All of our shelters that we rent out throughout the summer also, we had 377 shelters rented out. So we still have a good high activity number in, in our stuff. Boy, I blew through that. Rock's going to talk to you about youth activities.
Yeah, we also offer a variety of activities throughout the year, youth programs for sure. Our youth programs, our goal is to provide affordable and accessible fun activities that are not overly time-demanding, so kids and families have opportunities to participate in whatever other interests they have. We run youth programs, first of all, the numbers that you see at the top, this includes not only youth sports programs, but youth camps, tot-lot preschool age programs as well. We run youth team sports from the ages of four years old all the way through sixth graders. We have youth programs such as tumbling and tot-lot preschool programs, we start with three years old, and we go through a wide variety of activities with them. While what's popular, or what activities people are signing up for changes as people's interests change, stuff, the number of people we've been able to serve in our youth programs has stayed very similar since the year 2000, where we get about 2,000, 250, 2,500 registrations per year in youth programs. As you see, we had 2,312 registered for youth programs last year, which is about the exact, about 32 people different than it was in 2016. These numbers that I'm showing here do not even include our parent-child program, such as Indoor Park, which is a popular program at the Recreation Center during the cold winter months, on Tuesdays and Thursdays afternoons. It's not including our childcare program at the Rec Center either, where we have babysitting services while parents come in and work out or whatever. Our most popular youth programs, the NFL flag football program is our largest youth sports program. We are, we started this program in the year 2000 and had 184 participants that year. The following year, the youth tackle program started up, so we saw a little dip in program numbers right after that. But as you can see, this past year, we had 500 total, 520 total participants, first through sixth graders, which resulted in 54 teams. We have over 50 parent volunteer coaches doing a great job out there working with those kids. And those numbers look to keep going up as we go through. You might see them on a Saturday morning, Thursday night, at Birdsville Park, Fifa Park, all over, it's, it's quite a fun day to watch. Our biggest increase in that in the last, since 2013, we've had over an increase of 100 participants in fifth and sixth graders alone. Our most popular youth activity would be the Camp Cedar Falls program. This also started in the year 2000. That very first year, we had 22 people register for that. This past summer, we had 495 people, registrations for that program, 45 people. But in the past summer, we had people on the waitlist that we could get them all in. We had two sites offering to 80 kids per week in that. This summer, we're adding a third site where we should be getting closer to the 104, maybe even 112 people in that program on a weekly basis at three different sites there. Also, adult activities, we have plenty of those as well, wide variety. Most of those take place in athletic team sports that you're all familiar with. Variety of different things. Dodgeball, kickball, I think would be the most recent, we're looking at some other new trends and, and stuff of that as well. In 2017, we had 17 different sport registration options, over 191 teams participated in those, and I'm estimating at 1,800 participants because they sign up by team versus individual, so it's a mathematical equation that we work out for that. Which is down a little bit, but we lost some dodgeball teams, and we lost some adult softball teams as those numbers, participation in adult softball continues to keep going. You're probably all familiar with individual sports, such as pickleball, has been coming up a hot topic lately. Let's see. We offer pickleball drop-in play at the Recreation Center, Monday, Wednesdays, and Friday mornings from October through May. During that time, we average 17 people plus per day, the highest days are probably 33 at a time out there trying to play and get court time. So it's quite a popular sport, as you're aware of, and it's, works great for us in Recreation Center because that's a low time as far as visitors go in those Monday, Wednesday, Friday during school hours. We also offer a large amount of fitness programs. In the last month, we just added a new fitness coordinator. Megan Womack got started with us. She's got a lot of great new ideas, and I'm really excited about where she's taking things and some things she's looking at, so we're looking at what's going there. 2017 programs we offer, two different types of recreation programs, as far as fitness programs go, there are those that come with a fitness pass, where it's kind of an a la carte buffet type style. Buy yourself a fitness pass, you can go to anyone or all the programs that are offered throughout the year or throughout the week, which is typically over about 30 different classes per week. We sold 798 of those fitness passes in the calendar year of 2017, either one-month pass or a four-month pass. And that's up about 100 passes from the previous year, 120 passes from the 681 in 2016. The other type of class we offer at the Recreation Center is a pre-registered class, would be thrown into the fitness pass, however, these are limited space classes. We only have X amount of exercise bikes, X amount of space in the yoga room, whatever it might be, that we offer those. And those are all going, getting large numbers in those as well. And the other thing that, under Megan, she'll be supervising is our other fitness and wellness We have a massage therapist in the building, and surprising to me, in the year 2017, she did 523 massages in the Rec Center in that little area we have locked off for her, and she was gone for two months on maternity leave in that as well. So those impressive numbers she has of visitors and services performed there. We also have authorized personal trainers that do client sessions, 1,700, some client sessions in the Rec Center in 2017. Lot of users, lot of different types of users there in the Rec Center and through our youth program, our youth and adult activities.
Move this along while Chris finishes up with aquatic stuff.
Right. Last few slides, I promise, we're almost done.
You're fine.
Okay, I want to talk a little bit about the aquatics. The Falls Aquatic Center is my main emphasis here. I, I don't know if you knew, this is my, this upcoming season, will be my third season back under the aquatics programs, and it just amazes me every time I go out there to see the number of people that show up to swim at that, at that facility, it's quite, it's quite a gem. Just want to talk a couple minutes here about the, we had a few little improvements over the last, over last summer. We did get some new floatables, if you have young kids or grandkids that go out there, the things that they can climb on, we got a couple new of those. One of them we had to put immediately into service, we'll put another one in next year. We tried a new, a new idea around the zero depth of the baby pool last year. We tried replacing all the loungers with what are called sand chairs. They're basically just a seated chair rather than a layback lounger. Some of the thoughts behind that were to maybe people sitting up would then pay more attention to, to their swimmers. I, I wasn't so convinced that that would go over so great, but we didn't hear any complaints, and it was actually very well received, and we think people actually scooted the chairs closer and paid some more attention, which, which we really appreciated. One of the latest things that we added out there to the pool, if you notice driving down our main street, was the new digital sign-out front. It's, it's very exciting for us, we can put a lot of announcements on there, get a lot of flash going on. Another nice part that I thought of when they were talking about putting that in was the fact that the entire city can use that as an announcement board rather than just us. So Public Works or the City Council declares a snow emergency, we could put that up on that board, as long as we are in the office to do it. So I, I think in the long run, that thing will become very valuable to watch. And as we mentioned before, Max Galaxy was added out there in both the concessions area and the front cashier's area. The really nice thing about being in the front cashier's area is now when the people come in with their memberships, they can scan the card, and their photos will pop up on the, on the screens for them. A few numbers, I'm not going to read through them all, but our pool passes, our, our pool income over this last summer was a little bit lower than the previous years. Some of that was because we started out with a great summer, you know, really hot for a couple days, then it kind of became cold and rainy for the rest of the summer. But we still came in with two over, we'll round up, $253,000 worth of pool passes sold. I did include the, the winter passes in with that, but it's really negligible compared to what was sold for the summer, so it's, it's pretty accurate in the summer there. Attendance at our gates, if you take a look, we have 2,314 infants, 32, 33,000 youths, 18,000 adults. We scanned 38,000 memberships through our gates, and you've got to remember, this is from Labor Day until before, do I have that backwards, or have that right? Memorial Day to Labor Day, thank you. So it's really only a three-month time that they're open there. Total attendance for the summer, 84,387. If you count the 308 dogs that we had for doggie dip, we come up to 84,686 people and four-legged friends in our facility. Our total gate intake for the summer was 282,000, and that is just paying individuals, not including the passes. Talk about our concession stand a little bit, really fast. Our intake in that, before we take out our cost of inventory, was 93,000. Our top five sellers, we sold seven, we'll round up to 8,000 slices of pizza, 5,000 shaved eyes, you all know what a Bosco stick is? Has anybody heard of a Bosco stick? This is amazing to me, it's a piece of bread with a cheese stick shoved into it and microwaved. The kids love it, they bought over, they bought 5,000 of them. We couldn't keep them in the freezers. And then Dippin' Dots rounded off our top five with about 5,000 Dippin' Dots sold, so altogether, our combined gate and concessions for 2017 is 375,000 plus. That is about $3,171 per day. That's a lot of people, a lot of food, a lot of money going in and out of our gates there. We're very proud. And to stop and think about it, the lifeguard and the average concession staff is probably 16 to 18 years old, and then our lifeguards, you can have a lifeguard anywhere from, I think ours range from 15 all the way through their very early twenties, 21, 22, there might be some older ones there. That's a lot of people, a lot of money, a lot of merchandise for that young of an age of person, I do, I believe, so I'm very proud of what they do. And I did say that we were a little bit lower than the previous years, but basically, if you take one day that we were closed because of a rainstorm, that would have made up for our losses. We bring it through that fast. The last thing that we do at the pools, one of the last things that we do at the pools, our swim lesson programs. We had over 1,300 kids enrolled in our swim lesson programs over the year. So that's for the limited amount of pool space and limited amount of time, I think that's quite a lot of, of youth going through our programs, so. In a nutshell, that was last season at, at the Falls, I believe, yes. So if you have any questions for us, we'll be ready. I think you'll probably want to get ready for your meeting, though, I hope.
You're fine and we're fine. If you have any questions for counsel, I'd have to address to Chris.
For your, your questions about, or your answers for the concessions, you'd mentioned 93,000? You say that was before or after costs and staff time?
That's before. I've got our product taken out, which brought it down to about 44,000. I haven't taken into account the staff costs yet. If I had to guess, probably 30.
Anything else from counsel?
Well done.
Excellent gentleman, appreciate you coming in.
Well, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Counsel, we do have item five, is there a motion to approve bills and payroll?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That carries. I would open up to counsel, we've got about eight minutes for the regular counsel. Do you, do you want to need an extra time, or we start, start at 7 o'clock? Thanks for watching the meeting, we'll be back at the top of the hour for a regular council meeting.